If you'll please rise, I've asked Supervisor Gould to do the invocation. And will Supervisor Bishop please lead us in the pledge?
You join me in prayer. Lord, we thank you and praise you for this day that you've given us, Lord. We thank you for this great nation that you've given us, this experiment in leadership, Lord, where we allow men and women to rule themselves rather than having a king or lord placed upon them. Lord, we pray for our county employees. Many of them have dangerous jobs, Lord. We pray an extra measure of safety on those with those dangerous jobs so they can come home to the loving arms of their family this evening. And I ask all these things in the precious name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I need a motion to call for an executive session to be held on April 1st at 9:00 a.m. for discussion and consultation with legal counsel. So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion and action to approve waiving the reading is full of items presented for discussion, adoption, or approval at this meeting. I make the motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Official business to come before this board, discussion of pending or contemplated litigation claims and demands. Mr. Esplin?
I have nothing to report.
Okay. Are there any committee and legislative reports? We'll go around this room. How about Supervisor Watson?
Thank you, Chairman. On Monday, March 11th, went down for an eight-hour tour in Parker, Arizona, the Colorado River Indian Tribes, 80,000 acres of farmland operation. And Mike Hendricks, Jamie Geltler, and Mark Clark were also represented there. The Colorado Indian River Tribe has about 700,000 acre-feet of water that they receive through their Priority One, Priority Two water allotment. They also have 350,000 acre-feet of return flow, of which they are seeking relief from. So it's a very interesting trip, quite an iron opener.
Thank you.
Another water issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I attended the Mojave Valley Irrigation and Durange District meeting two weeks ago. There's an item on the agenda that we'll discuss at a later point.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Bishop? No reports really, other than just being active with legislative issues. Thank you. Supervisor Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At NACO, the highlight of the three meetings of the Public Land Steering Committee, basically they did three resolutions. There was also intense discussion as the conference on fighting wildfires, forest management, transportation, multiple agricultural issues, affordable high-speed internet in rural counties, and in one key rural affairs meeting, the importance of gathering a complete census count, which I think the chairman will go over. The three resolutions were in supporting utilization of domestic livestock grazing as a cost-effective and viable method of hazardous fuels reduction, a resolution on the Council of Environmental Qualities revisions to the National Environmental Policy Act implementing regulations, and the last one was a resolution regarding wildfire regulations and policies. So we had an MPO meeting. We're going to be starting a safe-driving campaign on social media, which will target the entire county to heighten driver awareness, hopefully leading to fewer accidents. We had a quad-state meeting, which is celebrating its 20-year anniversary. Organization is involved into an organization with a seat at federal tables instead of being a wallflower sitting around the edges. We completed our biannual audit, which I gave to the clerk. I also gave the clerk our questions and answers for historic right-of-ways if members are interested. Bill Lamb attended the Cohice Fire Management Project, and if Nathan can, he can put up some slides while I talk about it real quickly. But it's something being used elsewhere that I think we should have staff evaluate, our Alert Wildfire Detector Cameras, placed on peaks and confirm fires, and is run by a phone app. It started with earthquakes and can be used for flooding. They are in our wash, or, I mean, they're in, the states they're in now are in Washington, Oregon, Idaho, Nevada, California, and Utah. Costs about $2,700 for the camera, and about the same for installation. The interesting part was it was developed by middle schoolers. They did it for a project, like a climate project, and then they won in the United States, and then they went to one of the six, I think, six classes chosen to go to Copenhagen, and it was number one there, and Sony designed it for them. But it helps with recovery after fires, spotting the fires that come out. It can be used for flooding, anything like that. Pretty good deal. If Nathan can get the slides up, then everybody can kind of see an idea what I'm doing. And then we went into recovery after fires, post-fire soils. You know, we lose organic materials, and those are affected for 11 years or more. And it can destroy the fungi for up to 80 years. And rehabbing with nothing done, you see about a 5% recovery, and they have some new material they put out, and with that treatment, you get about a 75% recovery. Pilt will be a little less this year also. A two-year funding was done with SRS, no funding, so on S47, so we're back to approach for 2021. Just a little bit about that Alert Wildfire. There's a consortium of three universities, University of Nevada, Reno, University of California, San Diego, and University of Oregon, providing access to state-of-the-art pan tilt and zoom fire cameras, associated tools to help firefighters and first responders to discover, locate, and confirm fire ignition, quickly scale fire resources up or down appropriately, monitor fire behavior through containment during firestorms, help evacuate through enhanced situation awareness, and ensure contained fires are monitored appropriately throughout their demise. During the past two fire seasons, this was in '16 and '17, Alert Wildfire provided critical information for over 350 fires. And also in 2016, they had an arson spree in Lake Tahoe, and hundreds more were detected there. In 2017, the devastating North Bay Complex and Thomas Fires brought into sharp focus a need to quickly expand coverage across the western U.S. Although the three partner universities had been building their own redundant microwave networks to reliably acquire imagery, it became obvious that deploying new infrastructure to cover large areas in a short period of time was not realistic. Thus, a new strategy was adopted in '18 to install cameras on existing third-party microwave networks to build larger virtual networks, produce regional coverage, and to do it quickly in this model Towers of Opportunity, where you can use utility state, county services, and other private point-to-point communications infrastructure that is already in place. So they're outfitted with fire cameras and associated equipment to potentially allow 100 or more fire cameras to be installed in a single season. The data from these confederated networks are seamlessly incorporated into NSL Backup Acquisition System and presented on our cloud-based website in a straightforward manner to firefighters and first responders. It means more cameras more quickly, which equals better decision-making capabilities. That's all. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you very much. I attended the National Association of Counties Conference in Washington two weeks ago. It was a very good conference. I went there with three issues in my pocket, the opioid problem from the standpoint of people who use it legally and responsibly, Mojave County's wild burrow issue, and the BLM shutdown of our off-road trails. About two months ago, I asked people to send me their stories about being unable to fill their prescriptions or an experience with a doctor where their usual dosage has been cut. I was overwhelmed with the response, and each letter being a bigger heartbreak than the one before. I bundled those letters into a presentation and handed them to our congressional representatives, Congressman Paul Gosar, Senator Martha McSally, and Senator Kirsten Sinema. I received a positive response from everyone, especially from Congressman Gosar. I believe he will do everything in his power to move forward on a solution for this problem. I did have an idea, which I shared with all of them, and that idea was received warmly. I shared the idea with representatives from the Department of Health and Human Services, and will keep following up with them, and I will keep everyone here posted. I was directed to meet with staff from Senator Lee's office about the wild horse and burrow situation. The senator from Utah has stated that he wants to help fix this problem, as Utah has apparently a very big wild horse problem. And we are following up with his office to put together a Senate hearing about it. He asked us to come back and testify. I'm feeling like something might happen because of this, but again, I'm not sure. I attended the first meeting and became a member of NACO's Environment and Land Use Steering Committee's Subcommittee on Parks, Open Space, and Green Infrastructure. We learned of how other counties are utilizing their open spaces and getting public land given to them for trails and parks. When it came time for me to speak, I told them about our problem with the BLM's plan to shut down 1,600-plus miles of trails. To say this committee was mortified would be an understatement. They promised to take this up as their very first priority. To have a NACO committee advocate for us would be fantastic. I will be following up with this, and will report in the months ahead. One other huge issue NACO is addressing is the 2020 census. That census will be done for the first time over the Internet. I believe Mike Hendricks will have a report someday, a future meeting on this. We must all become involved in order to have an accurate count. Many things are contingent on the number that the census delivers. One of the most important things a census will decide is the number of representatives we send to Washington. Since the Internet is an important part of the census now and going forward, NACO has launched a mobile app called TestIt, T-E-S-T-I-T. NACO encourages everyone to download this app, which measures the speed of your wireless service. The app will identify areas of low or no connectivity to ensure adequate funding for broadband infrastructure is provided fairly across the country. I just want to take this opportunity to tell you that if you download this app and use it, it will tell you exactly the speed that you are experiencing over your wireless Internet, and that information will be sent over to NACO or whatever the technology company they're using, but none of your private information. It doesn't regard who you are, you know, only where you are and the speed. And that's going to be very, very important for us as a rural county. If you want the app, go to the App Store. And again, it's TestIt, T-E-S-T-I-T, and I'll also put it on my Facebook page. Finally, I was able to thank our congressional delegation for their hard work on the passage of Senate Bill 47, a major lands package that was signed by President Trump last week. The Bullhead City Land Exchange was an important piece of that legislation. After months of hard work and support from a number of legislators from the Arizona delegation, President Donald Trump joined Representative Gosar and to sign it the John Dingell Jr. Conservation Management and Recreation Act in the Oval Office. The passage of the bipartisan bill will reshape the face of Bullhead City. For years to come, the city will receive Section 12 Community Park in exchange for 1,100 acres in the Black Mountains gifted to the city by Mr. Don Loughlin. This landmark legislation will allow Bullhead City to create a sustainable Colorado River Park to be enjoyed by all residents and visitors for decades to come. It also approved the conveyance of nearly 6,000 acres back to La Paz County to allow for new economic development opportunities in that county, which is only 5% private land. Congressman Gosar sponsored the bill in the House. McSally and Senators McSally and Sinema were both supporters and sponsors in the Senate. Mayor Tom Brady said that the passage of this bill will forever change the face of Bullhead City, and we are excited on all the future prospects. Thank you. Do we have a county administrators' report?
Madam Chairman, thank you. As you mentioned, I'll be providing a future update on the census and redistricting, but this process is incredibly important. I was down at CSA Manager/Administrator Meeting Friday to where this was discussed. I found that about half the counties are ahead of us in this process and have staff that are dedicated to the redistricting and census program. And so I've got the contact information. I'll be meeting with my staff after this board meeting to try to kick-start that program, but it's an incredible public participation process. And I hope that we're fully engaged and we're able to go through it seamlessly and effectively and get the results that the Board of Supervisors and our citizens deserve. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you very much, and we will be speaking. I believe the cities are doing it. It's going to be a big collaborative effort on all of our parts, so I'm hoping the public will get involved as well. All right, I need a motion for the approval of the February 19th, 2019 Board of Supervisor meeting minutes.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm going to open the call to public now. Those wishing to address the board at the Call to the Public regarding matters not on the board agenda must fill out and submit to the clerk a Call to the Public Request to Speak form located in the back of the room prior to the meeting. Pursuant to ARS 38-431, a public body may make an open call to the public during a public meeting, subject to reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions, to allow individuals to address the public body on any issue within the jurisdiction of the public body. At the conclusion of an open call to the public, individual members of the public body may respond to criticism made by those who have addressed the public body but may ask staff to review a matter or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the public body shall not discuss or take legal action on matters raised during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. I do have one person signed up. That person, I'm hoping I'm going to pronounce your name correctly, Siri Tabbert. Is that it? Please come down and state your address for the record.
Hello, my name is Siri Tabbert. I live at 431 East Spring Street, Kingman, Arizona. I believe that it's only fitting, since the groundbreaking of the New Judicial Center is taking place this afternoon, that I go over briefly a little bit about what I've seen happen leading up to this historic occasion. I went back and I looked at one of the space needs studies from back in 2014 and looked and saw what the original site for the courthouse was planned under the space needs studies, which would have been adjacent to the building that we're in now. The space needs studies said that they would need to adequately house a new judicial center, 74,000 to 89,000 gross square feet. Right now, we're looking at a building that is going to take up almost 67,000 square feet. I don't know if that represents the regular actual floor space or the gross square footage, but that's a 10 to 25% reduction in the amount of space that was needed for that courthouse building. I think that building downtown has delayed the design and actually procurement process for building this courthouse. And I know it probably increased, that delay would have increased the square foot cost to the county, so I know that this site downtown was chosen because of a decrease in cost to the taxpayer. The county approached the city no less than a half a dozen times throughout the planning period to ask for concessions about parking, about public easements, and so forth. I attended many of those meetings and spoke to the fact that there was not adequate parking downtown, or that was a problem that needed to be considered. On Friday, myself and the adjacent property owner received notice that there was an interest in acquiring my property. The manager of that property adjacent to mine told me, had a conversation with a county employee, and was told that that acquisition was required for parking. He has made a lot of investment into his property. I was waiting until the time that this was firmed up, knowing how some of these things turn out, to make investments in my own property, which I now have extensive plans to do. I don't know what this is about. I just wanted to bring forward the facts and tell you about how I've been, and my neighbor has been involved in developing what's going to be an asset to our downtown, even though the original plan would have called for, you know, the courthouse to be eight tenths of a mile from where it is now. Yeah, I just wanted to mention that and say that I believe the acquisition of additional property at this time relies on an unjust premise. Thank you.
Thank you. Maybe our county manager can speak with you after the meeting to clarify some of those things that you talked about. Yes?
And Madam Chairman, just for the public, our parking for the courthouse project is sufficient. It was under my direction that I had staff contact the individual property owners to actually ascertain if they were interested in purchasing, finding out if we could, if they would allow us to appraise the property, so that I could bring that information back to the board and ask the board for a business decision on whether they wanted to go ahead and purchase property immediate adjacent, or have staff pursue purchasing property immediately adjacent to the courthouse building. And it was strictly for information and possible action, future action by the board, but it's nothing that's necessary for this particular construction project. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
And for the public's information, there will be the groundbreaking today at 2:00 p.m. And if anybody would like to come on by, where exactly should they go and park and... Oh, you don't know? Anybody there?
The parking lot. It's going to be in the parking lot right next to the historical courthouse.
Okay. Oh, okay. Kip is here.
Yes, happy to answer any questions. And I have had many discussions with Ms. Tabbert and also with Father Shaw at the Episcopal Church, making sure we're working with them as we move forward.
We really can't talk about this now, I don't believe, so...
Okay.
So, but you want to...
Yeah, 2:00.
Can we talk about this?
No.
I can't even ask him what time the...
Oh, no, just if you want to give the announcement of the time of our meeting. Beyond that, we're not going to talk about the parking issues.
Yeah, we can't talk about this.
Right, right. 2:00 p.m. We're going to be right on the grass area next to the parking lot for the ceremonial groundbreaking, so we certainly invite any that would like to come, and look forward to having many of you there as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I have no one else signed up, but I will open it up if anybody wants to come on down and have something to say. Going once, going twice. I'm going to close the call to public. At this time, we will go to the consent agenda. The consent agenda, items 5 to 40, will be considered as a group enacted upon by one motion minus any items pulled for discussion. Let's start with Supervisor Johnson. 30, did you say? Supervisor Bishop? Um, no, other than what Supervisor Johnson pulled, it's fine. Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Number 11.
11. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. Supervisor Watson?
They've already covered it. Thank you.
All right, so I need a motion to approve Consent Agenda, items 5 through 40, minus 11, 17, 27, and 30.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item 11. This is to approve the agreement for conducting a community health assessment in Mojave County between Kingman Hospital and Mojave County.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. How can I help you?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Ma'am, I just wanted a thumbnail overview of what's going on with this agenda item.
Certainly, absolutely. So we're going to collaborate with Kingman Regional Medical Center to complete another community health assessment. And I do acknowledge this is two years earlier than we would actually have to do this. Sorry, I'm losing my voice here. Counties, as part of their accreditation requirements, need to complete a new community health assessment every five years. Medical centers or hospitals that follow 501(c)(3) guidelines have to do it every three years. This is actually to our benefit financially, though, because we're contributing $10,000 to this. They're contributing 20, so we're getting kind of a deal, if you will, by doing a little bit early. If we went alone on this, we'd be paying a minimum of $30,000 in two years to do it ourselves. So financially, we're benefiting. We also build a better public health system when we're collaborating with our partners. This is our opportunity to do this. So this will be a systematic review of data and key indicators, which we've chosen, and we've made this more robust than we have in years past. So you'll see a lot of new indicators in this report that you haven't seen in the past. You will also see hospital data that we haven't had in the past, so that'll contribute to the depth and breadth of this entire report. So, any other questions?
Madam Chairman, so ma'am, what is a community health assessment?
Sure. So we'll take, we'll do morbidity and mortality information in this report. We'll look at injury prevention. We'll look at chronic disease, cancers, heart disease, and we'll look at the prevalence of those diseases. And we'll look at what those health needs are in our community. Where do we have the highest numbers? Are these things that public health can tackle? If not, it's basically our responsibility to bring the right people to the table to begin discussing these topics, not always for us to be the doers of the work, but to bring these people to the table to have those discussions.
Madam Chairman, so ma'am, is this required by the state government or the federal government?
It's part of our public health accreditation standards. So every five years, we're required to do it through public health accreditation. And tied to that, after we finish our community health assessment, we'll do a community health improvement plan, where we go out to the local communities, we provide the data that we learn through the community health assessment, and we get their feedback on what we need to tackle. What do we have support for?
So, Madam Chairman, ma'am, who requires that we do this?
Public Health Accreditation Board.
Madam Chairman.
It's a federal, but it's not tied to Health and Human Services, or NACO, or any of those groups. They're a separate board, separate entity.
I believe Mr. Hendricks would like to chime in here.
Yeah, Madam Chairman, it's, in the effort of trying to be a more effective and efficient organization, we're APWA accredited in Public Works, all of Public Works. A lot of Development Services is accredited through American Public Works Association. There's a separate accreditation for parks. There's an accreditation for the Health Department, which Denise is working under. And what that entails is throughout the country, this organization looks at the best practices, what health departments should be doing. APWA looks at best practices, what Public Works and Development Services areas should be doing to better serve the citizens. And so what the process is, is we benchmark, mark our practices against those listed practices, and try to meet the minimum or standard requirements throughout the country. And in doing so, they can achieve accreditation. I don't believe this survey is mandated. It's just a good practice and product that we provide our citizens, that we can actually utilize to evaluate the health and see where resources need to be presented in our communities. Is that correct?
The CHAW and the CHIP are required as part of our accreditation. So every five years, we're expected to update those documents in some way. We can update them just via data, but ultimately, that just gives us a small picture, a small slice of the piece of information that we need to make decisions.
Madam Chairman, my concern is generally, you see these reports that says that Mojave County ends smoke too much and are overweight. I don't know that I want to spend taxpayer dollars to have another report come out that tells us that we're overweight and smoke too much. And that's my concern with this. So apparently, this is nothing that the federal government is forcing upon us. It's nothing that the state government is forcing upon us. Apparently, this is something that we've chose to do to ourselves. And this is probably not the time to take a look at that, and I don't know if it was a board action that created this or not.
Great. I'd like to say so. I know, well, Supervisor Watson?
Thank you, Chairman. I've participated in, I believe, three of the assessments. And I would certainly like to invite Supervisor Gould to take my place, if you'd like to learn more about the assessment.
I'm going to be assessed later this week by my personal physician, so...
But I believe it's very important to the community to perform this evaluation, and I think it's been done every three years. I think I've attended three.
Yes, we've worked with Kingman Regional on each one.
Right, and it's hosted by Kingman Regional. It looks at a number of different parameters on the providing of healthcare and immunity, and it's important.
Yeah. I believe that about five years ago, it was when we went through the accreditation process with our last public health director. And I know it was a long, arduous process. It took a long time. We went to meetings. It's a lot. It's not just getting a plaque on the wall. It's... It's a lot of work. And then, because of that, we had put together an opioid panel that fell under the heading of that. We wouldn't have been able to do that without that. It's just the way the government, you know, makes your, the process work, and we were able to get grants and things like that because of it. The urgency, you know, we got to do things that maybe we couldn't have done without it, and that's why it's important. Maybe when we speak about it again, you can do a further report on it and say, because of what we've done with this accreditation, this is what the results have been. Maybe we can get sort of that.
Absolutely, absolutely. We can give you an update on all of our CHIP work groups that we have in each of the communities. That would be really helpful, because that fell under the umbrella of the community health assessment, the last one. Additionally, we're really trying to be data-driven in our decision-making process, because that's where we really make an impact. We don't want to just say, we think there's a problem. If we know there is, because the data is directing us that way, we have an ability to make those kind of decisions.
And when you go for grants, it's better. It looks good.
Absolutely.
It looks better. They sort of understand that you've done all the work and that you know exactly where this is gonna go.
Absolutely.
So, it's better for that, too.
Certainly.
Okay. Anything else?
No further questions.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve. Item number 11 is written.
Second motion?
Okay. I have a motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. On to number 17. This is to approve a warrant and signed contract for Adams Construction to project base 49, Housing Choice, Veterans Administration Supportive Housing Program, VASH. I do have some people signed up to speak. Supervisor Johnson, do you want to speak first?
Yes. Yes, Madam Chair, I'll go first. The only thing I want to do is clarify, because I had a lot of questions. This program does not affect the services that will be given to Bullhead or Lake Havasu.
No, and we can also bring Mr. Dave Wolf up to speak to that as well. But this is a separate, unique program. It's very positive, I think, for Mojave County. It's currently giving us the opportunity to utilize 49 vouchers for housing that we're not using, because the housing simply isn't available. So, there's really no cost to the county for this. It's just a very positive program that's gonna provide the opportunity for housing and services to veterans as the project moves forward.
I guess the only other question I would have is, you're giving this contract for how many years?
We're, we can contract for five years, but once this contract's awarded, the awarding of the vouchers themselves are covered under a separate program, and I would have to ask Mr. Wolf to come up and speak to that program. But it's a long-term issuance of those vouchers.
And then, is there a way that, you know, obviously, it's a good program and the way it's being set up, but if there's a problem with the facility later on, we're not tied into this 20-year contract?
Again, I'm gonna have, see if Dave's here and can come up and kind of speak to the secondary contract.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, members of the board, Supervisor Johnson. The secondary contract that we would be entering into after the units are completed and inspected would be for 20 years. Now, at any point, if they don't follow through with the terms of the HAP contract that we sign with them at that time, then that allows us to break that HAP contract at any time. So.
Those are the only questions I had, ma'am. Thanks, Mr. Wolf.
Any other questions?
I have a comment. I think this is, these vouchers are really going to help some of our veterans in the remote areas in my district, like Chloride, Dolan Springs, Meadview, Golden Valley, because as, as that population ages, with our veterans, a lot of them are unable to remain in their homes, because there's no medical available in these remote, distant areas. So, a lot of our aging veterans will be coming into Kingman, looking for services, and we'll be able to relocate in this apartment building. So, that's why it has my support. I think it's, the need is great, and, and we need to give our veterans a hand up, as Mr. Farrell always reminds us of. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? All right, we do have some people signed up. We have someone who is actually opposed, John Osman, would you like to come up and speak?
Hello. My only, I have two questions.
Excuse me, please name your, your name and your address.
Oh, my name's John Osman. I live at 119 Jackson Street.
Thank you.
This is basically going in my backyard. I am a veteran, and I think what, what they want to do is great, but why my backyard and how? The how is, the city already denied the rezoning of townhomes and low-income housing. So, how are they gonna award a contract if it hasn't been rezoned? That's one question. And then, like I said, why? Why that particular parcel behind my house? Like I said, I am a veteran, too, and I.
Okay. Can anyone speak to this?
Well, my, my understanding, it's not one specific location, is that correct? Mr. Wolf, yeah.
Why that specific location?
Madam Chair, members of the board, the parcel that he's talking about, that was going through a rezoning process, that was the initial site for the project. But they failed in, the developer failed in their attempt to get that parcel rezoned, and it was denied by the city of Kingman. So, they moved the project location to an appropriately zoned parcel. It's actually three parcels that are zoned commercial, which is in the same area. Now, the, another to answer your question of why it has to be there, well, it has to be near the VA Medical Center, because each one of the VASH participants receives case management from the VA, to deal with all of their issues and transitioning out of homelessness, and take care of their medical issues, and so forth. And the project is actually contingent upon tax credit funding. So, the first stage here is, we're going to award these VASH vouchers today, hopefully, the board, if the board chooses to do so. And then, the developer's going to apply for tax credit funding to fund the actual construction of the units. So, in this Department of Housing's application, they require that, or they actually give more points for projects. If this is a project for VASH, they want to see that project in close proximity to the actual VA Medical Center.
So, do I understand you correctly that the parcel that this gentleman is speaking of, that's, it's gonna be nearby, but it's not in that specific?
Correct.
Where'd they remove it to?
It's, it's in the backup here. You can, I can show, I can show it.
No one ever sent me anything that showed where they're gonna redo.
I can show it to you after.
Okay. Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
What we're approving, Mr. Wolf, is the use of our VASH certificates for the building of a, of this facility, not specifically at this location, at any location that qualifies.
That would, that's correct. In the RFP that was issued by the board, which called for, this is a competitive process that we have to go through in order to project-base our vouchers at any development. What we're trying to do is get more affordable housing developed in the Kingman area for our veterans, because of the problems we've had in housing veterans and the, and the substandard housing conditions that exist, and the tight rental market. So, but we're, we weren't requiring any specific location, other than in the, it would be in the Kingman area of the county.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I'll look at that.
Okay, we have about five or six people signed up in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you. In favor of this. And I'm gonna call you, but if someone speaks to what you're gonna say, you can have the option to pass. Robert Barnett?
My name's Robert Barnett. I live at 4100 North Lumita. I am the Vietnam Veteran Service rep for the Vietnam Veterans here in town, a volunteer. I work with disabled veterans every day. Most of them, they're homeless. They're, they're not homeless because they want to be. They have, most of them have service-connected disabilities. Getting low-income housing in Kingman is almost impossible. With this, we'll be able to put these people into housing. They want to be part of the community. They want to work. But in order to work, you have to have a stable place to live. And if you live underneath a bridge someplace, you're not stable, and you're not, most likely not able to gain employment.
Okay.
This is very important to us, and we'd appreciate you voting yes.
Thank you very much. Alex Friend. Is Mr. Friend here? Okay. Pass on that. Your name and address, please?
Joe Throneberry, 4566 Fernetti Lane. Madam Chair, members of the board, I stand in favor today of item number 17 on the agenda item. I'm currently the Workforce Development Board Chairman for Mojave and La Paz County. I'm a veterans mentor for Veterans Treatment Court. I'm part of the Veterans Resource Team, and I can tell you that this has a high impact on all of those different functions that I serve in, in the community. We have economic development issues moving forward right now, where we have large companies trying to move into our county and increase our tax base. The first thing they look at is cost of doing business in our county. The next thing they want to know is, is there a trainable workforce in the area? The next question is, where are they gonna live? As we know, the housing market here is really tight right now. We have veterans that have current vouchers, but have no place to go. We've had several large apartment complexes pull out of the VASH program recently. That's left those veterans with vouchers, but no place to go. I know that they just finished the stand-down in Bullhead City. Pat Farrell, Pat Farrell and JAVC. 284 veterans received community service at that. Forty-eight veterans identified as homeless at this time, and that's not including the at-risk veterans that didn't identify. This is not only gonna help with veterans in our community by giving them a solid base as a housing unit, and then it's much easier to get them employed if they have that base. It's also gonna relieve affordable housing for the whole community, because every time a veteran moves into this facility, that's gonna free up one spot for somebody else in the community. I applaud the mayor and her challenge to end homeless veterans, veterans homelessness in the, in the community. The JAVC and the Veterans Resource Team, we have about 30 core partners in the community. We've recently developed a emergency resource guide for these veterans, and I appreciate the board's support to this point, and I'm in favor, and I, and I hope you vote for this project.
Thank you, Mr. Throneberry, and thank you for your service.
Madam Chairman, I have a question. Sir?
Yes?
You mentioned landlords had pulled out of the program. Do you have any idea why those landlords pulled themselves out of the program?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Gould, the number-one reason that we hear is that they are able to get more money on the economy than they can for the, for the VASH program. Dave Wolf would be able to speak to the exact numbers on that, but basically, you've got, for a one-bedroom, it's around $650, including utilities. So, if, if an apartment complex owner or rental property owner can get $750 for that unit, they no longer need us. So, in 2008, when everybody was on board and, and got with the county and was able to give all these units, you know, up, up for them, it was a, it was a win-win situation. But now, because the housing market's getting tight and affordable housing is harder and harder to find in this county, you know, they're doing what they have to do as a business, and they're, they're getting more money by renting it directly. The second thing that comes up is, there's a lot of misinformation about using the VASH program, and what happens if a veteran causes damage to the property and then disappears. There are contingency funds, and a couple different ways to be able to repair those damages and get, and get those landlords to use the program again. And, and we do have people in the Housing Department that are more than willing to go out and go through that paperwork with landlords and property owners and realtors, you know, to, to get to the bottom, to get to the truth of what's really going on out there. But the bottom line is, we just don't have enough affordable housing in this county, and unfortunately, our veterans seem to be getting the brunt of it at the bottom.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Linda Bennett? Is there Linda Bennett here?
I was asked to be last, but.
Well, two people asked to be last, so.
Everybody wants to be a closer.
My service dog is at the vet, and I had the phone ringing, so I better turn it off, because it'll go on. I'm Linda Bennett. I live at 2167 Kingman Avenue. I have affordable housing right now, but I, I have needs that I would like to move. I am not a veteran. My brother was a Vietnam veteran, and when he came back, they, they closed his plant where he had worked. They took him back at his job, and he was jobless for quite a while. And sometimes, people are not treated well when they come back from a war. And, you know, housing is a big issue in this town right now. My, I'm looking for different housing, and the, the property management I have, they used to have 15, 20 units. Now, they have two. And, and for a veteran to go in there, they have a list of rules that you have to qualify for. And most of the, the people that Bob is trying to help would not get in. Anyway, my brother was able to get a job, and he retired from the post office, but it took him a long time. And I just have a heart for this, and, and I have a heart for the fact that something in this paper said, worried about alcoholism. Alcoholism, and my, this is my own personal experience, runs through all segments of our society. There are doctors that are alcoholic. There are lawyers that are alcoholic. And it's not just veterans, and so I ask you to approve of this.
Thank you very much. And last but not least, our friend, Mr. Pat Farrell.
Good morning. I'm Pat Farrell, and I live at 2715 Pasadena Avenue here in Kingman, and I've been here for over 14 years. And appreciate the opportunity to address this group, and welcome Supervisor Gould to the board. Have yet to meet you, and the support we have received from this board in the past. The Veterans Administration has specialized programs for homeless veterans, and serves hundreds of thousands of homeless and at-risk veterans each year. Independently and in collaboration with federal and community partners, VA program provides veterans with housing solutions, employment opportunities, healthcare, justice, and re-entry-related services, and much more. The HUD-VASH program has added over 140 vouchers in Mojave County in the last eight years, from 25 to 165-plus. And that's through the efforts of the Continuum of Care and the Housing Authority and all these groups that go out and count the homeless every January when it rains and it's cold. Ten jobs have been added to the HUD-VASH program here in Kingman over the last seven years, and they are well-paying jobs with the Veterans Administration. The Adams Development Project to provide above-standard housing for the HUD-VASH program is a win-win proposal for all. This project will have temporary good-paying construction jobs and one full-time position when complete. The services that will be provided will add to the general overall health of our county, and has the potential to inspire. and has the potential to inspire others to come in out of the desert. This would reduce the county's per capita veteran suicide rate, as the VA has determined that exposure to the types of services that will be available here will have three out of five veterans no longer considering a permanent solution to a temporary problem. Despite public perceptions of affordable housing negatively impacting nearby property values, there is evidence to suggest that the impact is minimal at best. Trulia, an online residential real estate site, conducted a study of low-income housing tax credit projects that have no impact on the value of nearby properties. According to their study, there was no significant effect from 1996 to 2006 on home values because location of this type of project. Trulia studied 20 markets, and the only market that had an impact was Cambridge, Massachusetts. We all know it's not cheap delivery, no matter what. These 49 units will make a dent in the ever-increasing available housing in our county and will allow for more homeless to gain access to the resources that they need to return to a gainful civilian life. Your support of this project is appreciated and also is requested. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Farrell?
Comments?
I have no questions, but I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your support.
Oh, wait, wait, wait. Don't... For Dave Wolf?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Mr. Wolf, can you, is this, the method of funding this for the developer, is this where they're issued income tax credits? Then they go into the, into the market and sell these income tax credits at a discount to raise the money to build the, the facility?
I believe so, although I'm not really an expert on the, the tax credit program.
Thank you. Can you elaborate on the, on the problem with landlords accepting the vouchers? Is it just the fact that market rent is now higher than what the voucher will pay?
Yeah, that's primarily the, the issue. And if they're in a hot rental market, we have paperwork they have to sign, which sometimes, you know, they don't like having to deal with all the federal paperwork. They, we have to inspect their units every year, and they have to allow that inspection. And they have to maintain their units at a, at a minimum level. It's called housing quality standards.
So, Madam Chairman, Mr. Wolf, the voucher is the payment in full to the landlord? The landlord doesn't receive any other subsidy?
No, they, they receive, how the Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher Program works is that the maximum that the tenant can pay is 30% of their monthly adjusted gross income. And then the, the program picks up the rest. So they, they're, they're getting two payments. One payment from us, and one payment that is the responsibility of, of the participant, their, their tenant.
So the, the voucher's variable, then?
The amount, we have a set size. It's based on the family size, so there's a, there's what's called the fair market rent and the payment standard that the Housing Authority set, which is based on the fair market rent. And so, and that goes up by bedroom size. That's the maximum that we can accept from the landlord in contract rent. And then we have to factor in the, the utility allowance, which we give to every participant. That's a factoring of the program. It's a little complicated, but that, that, so your, your contract rent cannot be ever more than the fair market rent. And then what we're doing, so when we, we have a fair market rent, say it's $650 for a one-bedroom unit, then we have to take out, say, $75 or $80 or whatever the, the utility allowance is out of that. And then that reduces the amount that the landlord can actually get in just contract rent. So it puts us in a situation currently where the market rents are rapidly increasing, and there are less and less landlords that, you know, are willing to work with our program because they can get a higher rent in the private market.
Madam Chairman, Mr. Wolf, do, when they're, when they're talking about fair market rent...
Mm-hmm.
Do, are they using a metropolitan...
Yes.
...area? Because I believe, we had a problem a few years back in Lake Havasu with the similar housing that was not for veterans. The veterans' angle throws most of my, my argument out because I'm more than happy to help veterans as a special situation. But they would include Las Vegas rents in the Lake Havasu Market, which I think distorted the rent, the, distorted the numbers to the disadvantage of traditional landlords over these tax-credit-funded projects.
Well, that changed really about 2005. What ended up happening, that's the way we used to be part of, of the Las Vegas Metropolitan Statistical Area for HUD, is what you're referring to.
Yeah.
Then in 2000, we did the 2000 census. They actually took Mojave County out of that and looked at rent affordability in the census process. And then by the time, it takes years, get caught up from the census. So about 2004, 2005, somewhere around there, they took Mojave County out of Las Vegas, and we, we were actually considered our own Metropolitan Statistical Area. So the scenario you were describing, yes, it did, it artificially inflated the fair market rent, which was great for our program, but wasn't really accurate. So when they did that, then they started to just look at Mojave County rents. So we never had a problem getting landlords working with our program because we could pay the market rent because it was based on Las Vegas...
Correct.
...in years past. But since 2005, we really have to deal with just what HUD considers the fair market rent for just looking at Mojave County.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, anyone else? Can I need a motion?
Okay, I'd like to make that motion, if I might, and a, and a comment. I just wanted to state that, you know, being low-income or disabled doesn't make you a bad neighbor. And with that being said, I do support our veterans, and I'd like to make a motion that we approve the award and sign contract to Adams Construction to, Adams Construction to project base 49 vouchers at a complex, the townhomes, to be constructed with the various items listed in Item 17 contingent upon.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Number 27. Approve the adoption of Board Supervisor Resolution Number 2019-024 to approve and accept the part of frontage road identified in Arizona Department of Transportation's resolution. This land is located along the north side of Interstate 40, extending from Shinnerrump Road, south of, south 5,020 feet to Black Rock Road. Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Lutowski.
Madam Chair, I'm the owner of the property. I forgot to sign up, so if you have any questions for me?
We're, we're done with that, but thank you very much. Oh, the, oh, this property? Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, no, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I misunderstood you.
Mr. Lutowski, the reason this is coming to the board, and clarify, I voted against this one coming to the board, but the applicant doesn't want to pave the road. What, what kind of recommendation is the county going to have on this frontage road and this business, as far as paving goes?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Supervisor Johnson, this particular item contemplates the county's acceptance of right-of-way that has been abandoned by the State of Arizona ADOT and formerly administered by ADOT as a frontage road to Interstate 40. It does follow and parallel Interstate 40 on the north side of the 40, quite a ways west, out past and even beyond the Griffith area. So what happened was the applicant in this development, a propane transfer station, had been in their preliminary workup of a site plan and the requirements of ADOT in gaining an access permit. ADOT came back and really rendered a, quite a rigorous improvement that the applicant would have to undertake in the context of paving substantially. Frontage road from Shinnerrump Road approximately one mile, well, a little less than one mile to their property. In subsequent discussions with ADOT, ADOT agreed to relinquish its interest in south frontage road and indeed abandon to the county, which the board previously considered, and this is a form of acceptance. So where we stand right now is we have a property that is still subject to site plan development, and the parameters by which the property will be generating traffic, and namely truck traffic, will be presented at a future time to both Development Services and Public Works for review and concurrence as proposed by the applicant's engineer. I have personally looked, given some high-level traffic estimates that were provided by the applicant, and I do find that the ADOT rigorous pavement section that was required was, you know, unduly over and above what would normally be required of the level of truck traffic impact on this. I think the applicant would be much better positioned to speak on this, as it still is a pending site plan proposal and approval by the reviewing agencies. But I do believe the applicant is of the opinion that they may approach the county with, seeking concurrence for the parcel owner, the property and use owner, to just perform private maintenance of the roadway going forward as a contingent to the county's acceptance of just access to the, what would be public right-of-way if accepted by the board.
I guess the problem I have is, you know, this is a frontage road. And the frontage road is going to have, you know, it's, it's a place where we put industry and, and commercial buildings out that way, and it's going to need good road, roadways out there. And if we half-step again, we're going to get into a place like we did with the winery where they come back and then we end up paving for everything. But that's all, that's the only question I had.
And Supervisor Johnson, just to clarify, that is correct. On the northwest, I call them quadrants, on the northwest quadrant of that Shinnerrump-I-40 interchange, there is a conglomerate of industrial and commercial developments, you know, namely warehouses and transfer stations, et cetera. What happens is, this is just one of multiple commercially-zoned or industrially-zoned properties at front, frontage road, but it is the first, to my knowledge, the first development that is going in. So typically, we would just look and hold them to the level of improvements that would be necessary for their particular use. Thank you.
That's all I had, Madam Chair.
Anyone else?
Just a comment for Supervisor Johnson. I'm unaware that Brooks Road has been paved. Those are the, that's the road where the wineries are.
Oh, we didn't, I thought we voted to pave that and go ahead and move it in. Oh, they came and asked us, and it was turned down?
That's right.
Well, congratulations, Mr. Watson. Take back all those things I've been saying about you. Half of them, anyway.
Well, I voted for the positives, but we didn't win.
Okay, need a motion.
Supervisor Angus, I'll make a motion that we approve item number 27.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Let's do a roll call on this. Supervisor Watson?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson?
No.
Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
Supervisor Gould?
Aye.
Chairman Angus?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion for reconsideration of item number 29. I think Supervisor Watson gave me the wrong number.
Oh, okay. So I'll second that. Okay, so this is a motion to reconsider. We'll talk about 29 if this passes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so, right in the nick of time, number 29. Except, so is this instead of 30?
Well, I already pulled 30, so yeah, instead of 30, but I'll just...
Okay. So 29 is accept the outside training grant from the Constable Ethics Standards and Training Board for 3,358 to be used by Constables Mike Hamilton, Ray Carlson, to attend the 2019 National Constables Conference in Reno, Nevada. Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, this is, I want to make sure that, I don't know if anybody's here to address this issue about the funding.
Is anyone here? Any constables here?
Yes.
Isn't that right?
Oh.
I need the rebels to, to answer any questions.
Okay, do you, do you want Mr. Cobb to come down?
It's up to the board. I don't know if Mr. Cobb's not involved in this, but...
Well, what's, what's your question?
Just want to go over the, to make sure that no, no county expenses were going to be, be used on this. It was all being funded by the Constable, the Ethics Committee, I believe, or Constables...
Yeah, I believe they, they pay for all this training. Is that correct?
Madam Chairman, I think Constable Cobb's name is on the grant application.
Oh, okay, then come on down.
Good morning, Supervisors. Constable Cobb, Kingman Precinct. Your question, Supervisor Johnson, was will the county be liable for any money involved?
Yes.
It should not be. The Constable Ethics Board approves a grant for an X amount of dollars. The constables then ask you to approve accepting that money. Then they go do their training, and then if they have, so the county doesn't have to pay any of their extra, but they then turn in all of their expense reports, and then the county reimburses them, and then the county gets reimbursed from the Ethics Board for that money. So it should not be unless they've done something where they charged up a lot more money, and then they ask you to pay for it. But in the budget cycle, it's approved as they only get that much money. They would have to come back later to ask for more money.
All right, that's, that's the question I had, Madam Chair.
So let me, let me clarify that. So in their budget, they have an item for training, and so the Ethics, the committee pays for this amount.
They've been approved for 3,358.
That's for both of them.
For both of them, yes.
For both of them.
Yes.
And then...
They turn in like a budget that's going to say how much their travel is, how much their housing is, how much their meals are. So they've been approved for that, and they're supposed to estimate over that. So then the county approves that, the county will spend that much money. That's all the county is committing to. So if they pay, if something happened and they asked, if they went over their budget, they would have to come ask you to approve paying over that. They, they're paying for that out of their pocket, then they're going to be asked, they would ask for reimbursement. They've never done that in the past, so it, that's why I said, it should never happen.
But to reiterate the original question, are we going to, are we on the hook for any of it?
No.
Unless we choose to be.
Unless you choose to be.
Okay, but this, this is covered, this 3,000.
Yes, yes.
Any questions?
I have a question. Constable Cobb, have you attended the Constable Ethics and Standard and Training?
I am on the Ethics Constable Standard Training Board.
You're on the board?
Yes.
So...
I have not gone to a national conference.
Okay. I'm just wondering if maybe we need to possibly add another word into this, like Constable Ethics Behavior Standard and Training? We're sending our two people. I want to make sure they behave themselves. That's the only comment I have.
Okey-dokey. Any other questions?
I, I do have a question. We have a new, newly-elected constable in Lake Havasu City, and I see that we're not sending the newly-elected constable. We're sending two constables that attended last year. And in fact, one of them kind of got a reprimand for bad behavior last year. So my question is, do you, do you know why we're not sending the new constable that could benefit from training since he's new?
Yes, I do. The outside training grant that the Ethics Board approves, there's parameters on, on constables to apply for that. They have to be a person of leadership through, through the Constables Association. So this year, there, a couple years ago, the state legislature changed some laws and some rules for us. So there is a, basically, a head constable for each county that has at least four constables or more, and there's an assistant head constable. Mike Hamilton is the presiding constable, I guess, that's what it's actually called, and raised the associate presiding constable. So hence, they can, they qualify to go. I could go, since I'm on the Ethics Board, I chose not to go. I get plenty of training through the things that I do. So they both qualified for that. And that, anybody that gets that outside training grant, generally, they're on the ACA Board, Arizona Constables Association Board, or presiding constables.
Okay.
The ones that have been approved are all of, people of... The ones that have been approved are all of, people of leadership, yes.
That's interesting, because I thought that Constable Colson was removed from the Arizona Leadership.
He was, he resigned from the Arizona Constables Association, but he is the associate presiding constable of Mojave County.
Okay, interesting, thank you. I have no further questions.
Yes.
Constable Cobb, where does the money from your Constables Association come from?
The, Arizona Constables Association is not actually involved with this. It comes from the Arizona Constables Ethics Standard Training Board. That money that they accumulate comes from a $5 RIT fee of all RITS that are issued through the justice courts through Arizona. So that money is paid, used to pay for all of the training, both in-state, the out-of-state training, the extra training for firearms, and then it also is used for equipment grants. And there's different cycles through the year where constables can apply for that. So any elected constable can apply for them training grants and equipment grants, but they're at different times through the year.
So, Madam Chairman, Constable Cobb, it's from a fee that the justice court assesses rather than from, say, property tax or the county general fund?
Correct. It all comes from, would I say a RIT fee? Generally, a RIT fee's gonna come from a homeowner that is renting property, or it's gonna come from a person that had a lawsuit, and they get a writ of garnishment on either wages or out of the bank. So it's, yeah, it's no money from any taxpayers.
Madam Chairman, Constable Cobb, is something that the constables are involved with when those are issued?
Yes. Most of the time, we, well, we serve almost all of the restitution that come to justice court, and a large amount of the writ of garnishments, so yes.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. I need a motion.
Madam Chairman, I'd be glad to make a motion for the approval, item number 29.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
I'm sure I'd make a motion to approve item number 30.
I second the motion.
Before we go on, I just, on the record, that that last item, it was for the one. Okay. And item 30?
Yes.
We have a motion, second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. I think we're done with the consent agenda. And now we are going on to the regular agenda. Mr. Lutowski has brought this to us from Public Works, Agenda Item 41, Discussion and Possible Action, Staff Recommendations on County Options for Repurposing the Stark Jail at the Superior Courthouse and Future Law and Justice Center Sited 401 Spring Street in Kingman. Does anybody want to hear from Mr. Lutowski, or...
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Lutowski, come on up.
Good morning, Chairman Angus, members of the board. Staff at the direction of the board has brought back a rather robust review and potential alternatives for the repurposing with the interest of maintaining its historical character and status as a national register of historic places, landmark. The historic jail on the site of the Mojave County Superior Court, Future Legacy Law and Justice Center. Currently, the Law and Justice Center project will not be contemplating any improvements, changes to historic jail. It basically stands alone presently and will stand alone as the project is prosecuted. However, staff has presented for the board's consideration and potential future direction five alternatives to consider. One, of course, is the do-nothing alternative, but it should be noted that as this is still a Mojave County facility, that facilities has programmed approximately $18,000 for maintenance work necessary to maintain the historic jail's roof in FY '20. Other options include county-led facility improvements. There are substantial ADA deficiencies with regard to access to the jail period, and then, of course, interior to the jail, there are numerous ADA deficiencies if the building were to be open to the public. Those corrections would have to be necessary to the extent, and I do underscore this, to the extent that we make the public accessible to the interiors of the building. So just starting with access only, facilities estimates approximately a $10,000 investment in ADA improvements, exterior improvements, just to gain access to the main entryway to the jail. And then that would afford the public to have access to at least the first floor, but not the basement and not the second-floor area. Another option would be at no cost, but to see where this particular alternative would go, would be, and this has been picked up, we've seen by other jurisdictions as well, simply do a request for information, we call an RFI, we do a formal public procurement, and that is solicit practical ideas for an adaptive, what I call an adaptive reuse of the historic jail, that may entail collaboration with, you know, other private entities and, you know, their ideas for repurposing it for either public-private use, private use only under a lease with the county, and therefore... Another idea, which has been presented to us rather informally by the city of Kingman, it wasn't so long ago where the Historic Preservation Committee did tour the facility, and we do understand that there is some level of interest, at least at the committee's level. We're not sure where the council stands, but the approach there would be to partner with the city of Kingman Historic Preservation Commission, identify renovation and preservation options as well as a cost estimate. The preservation, Historic Preservation Commission stated that they would pursue a grant for what's called a historic building preservation plan, and there would be a match of approximately $12,500 incumbent upon the county, as well as a $7,500 county match if the city is successful... I'm sorry, the plan itself is a 12, the city's floating a 50% match at $12,500. However, if the city were successful in gaining a grant, that match would reduce to $7,500. I understand that the grant value is $10,000. So anywhere between $7,500 and $12,500 would be sought from the county by the city, if the city even moves forward with that type of proposal. And lastly, contemplating disposing of the historic jail by public auction, and conveyance of fee simple interest in the building and immediate site property, or possibly a building, you know, complete building relocation by the successful bidder. And that, again, would be terms and conditions set forth by the county in making that cost incumbent upon the successful bidder. It's just merely mentioned because of the proximity of Los Angeles and Las Vegas is, you know, possible, invites possible interest turn toward repurposing the jail for entertainment purposes in those locales. We wanted to put everything out there, and that is the five options, as succinct as I could lay them out.
Thank you very much. Questions?
Is there room for the clerk of the Superior Court to move in there?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Johnson, we haven't entertained any repurposing for county offices.
Madam Chair, I have a question. Mr. Lutowski, can this building actually be moved to another location?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Bishop, actually, the answer is yes. I consulted with our facilities manager, John Meeting, and it would be approaching a Herculean effort, but not under impossibility. There are equipment that can facilitate relocating such structure, and we are confident that, you know, that would be a palatable option, albeit at a extensive cost, but possibly an option.
And probably just the main building, not the basement, I'm assuming?
Correct, yes, yes.
As it sits now, is it structurally sound? I mean, there was, the question is whether or not the chimney was about to fall over, or it looks like it's pretty strong, but your opinion on that, please?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Bishop, it's my understanding that the building, you know, as a whole is structurally sound. There are certain appurtenances, such as a chimney that had exhibited certain, you know, issues, you know, but that is not necessarily structurally part of the building itself. So we do find that the building is structurally, you know, relatively structurally sounding and standing.
Okay, well, my personal feelings, if I can share that, is that this is a historical building. It's very interesting inside, and I think the public would really enjoy having that available to them. Maybe perhaps a video that streams all day long showing the upper and lower levels, and I know there was talk about maybe a Starbucks, I mean, that's interesting, but I would not like to see this building torn down and that part of our history destroyed, so I'm open to just about anything, as long as the building can be saved, whether it's this location or another, but I think our law enforcement community would love to have a museum in it.
Supervisor Watson?
Thank you, Chairman Angus. Mr. Lutowski, when a location such as this is put on the Historical Register, does that put limitations or special qualifications for any type of design change that might influence our decisions on that?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Watson, the actual designation itself would steer us toward considering any type of solutions for conformance, you know, at our decision, you know, be compared to those Secretary of the Interior's standards for the treatment of historic properties, which stress the importance of retaining and protecting materials and feature that convey that property significant, historical significance. I believe as it stands, we are not necessarily bound by any law requirement in terms of disruption of the historic character of the property itself. Any public access to the property would render the federal requirements, as we all know, with regard to ADA access. So it's probably more incumbent upon the county if we were going to entertain any improvements that we utilize the reference that I just gave, you know, as a guide for ensuring that we are maintaining the historic character of the building. I'm not sure if there's any ramifications, I have not researched this, on, you know, potential loss, removal, if you will, of the site from the National Register if certain historic characters were changed, if that calls into effect a specific inspection.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lutowski. The other question I've got is, I'm pretty sure that there's a poured concrete structure, isn't that correct?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Watson, we have it described as a building being cast and placed concrete with steel-lined walls and the holding cells and anterooms, so, yeah, it, I can't speak to the exact...
I'm almost positive it is.
Yeah, it sounds reasonable.
I'll tell a little story on myself, and this is for the entertainment portion of our presentation. As a elementary school student from Palacristi down to the place where my parents' business was, I would pass by the jail every day, going to school, coming and going. And you can get a good, pretty good tour just by walking by the first floor, because the cellmates in there would oftentimes entertain you from time to time, or ask you for favors, so it's a good possibility that maybe we could just make it available to look on the inside and not have to tour the whole thing. It's not that big, but it is pretty valuable historically to Mojave County. Thank you.
Okay.
Chairman Angus?
Yes.
I think I could also address Supervisor Watson's question about remodeling it, removing it, destroying it. Going to the National Park Services website, it talks about National Historic, National Register of Historic Places. What are the restrictions? And if you go to the frequently asked questions, it answers those. What are the restrictions, rules, regulations for historic property owners? And also the other question is, can I modify, remodel, or renovate my historic house? And the website states, under federal law, the listing of a property in the National Register places no restrictions on what a non-federal owner may do with their property up to and including destruction, unless the property is involved in a project that receives federal assistance, usually funding or licensing permitting. So if we don't receive federal assistance, if we don't have a federal license, if we don't have a federal permitting, then we probably can do most anything that we want with it. Once we receive that federal funding, that's when the restrictions come in, and then we're gonna have to follow certain things. The other thing, too, that it suggested too, is that we check with the state Historic Preservation Office. There may be state laws that may prohibit us from doing that, and I haven't researched that, but as far as the federal is concerned, if we're receiving federal money or federal funds for it, then the restrictions come into place. If we're not receiving that federal funding, then we don't have as many restrictions, and we could up to actual destruction of the property.
In that case, then we probably need to be careful. We do receive PILT dollars, payment of taxes from the federal government.
I don't think it'd be for that. I think it's specific to this project, is once we're receiving federal funds specific to this. I'd have to research it, but I think it's specifically to this, if we're receiving federal assistance to rehab it, if we're receiving federal assistance to permit certain things or licenses, then we would, then it would kick in.
Thank you very much.
That'd be my guess.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
My thoughts are, we don't have the money to finish the, or build out the court the way we wanted to do it, and historical value, if we have a historical society, or the state historical, or somebody wants to take it from us, I'd be, wouldn't let them do it, but I think it's gonna be a big pit for money for us if we do it. Mr. Lutowski's talking about ADA compliance, I mean, just $10,000 to get you in the front door, and once you're in, you still have thresholds and doorways, and, you know, to use the whole building would probably be more than it would cost us to move the building, you know, so I would think we'd either, you know, take the option of looking to see if somebody wants to, you know, partner with us to restore it and build a Starbucks inside of jail, or whatever they want to do, or if a historical society would like to take it over or take it off our hands. That would be my thoughts.
What do you think?
Jailhouse coffee?
All right, any other comments, or I'm gonna need some action on this?
I have nothing further.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion.
And what would that motion be?
I would motion that we exercise option three.
And option three is that the county solicit practical ideas for adaptive reuse of historic jail in addition to possible partners and/or tenants. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay. Let's do a roll call. Supervisor Watson?
No.
Supervisor Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
Supervisor Gould?
Aye.
And Chairman Angus?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay. Agenda Item 42, Discussion and Possible Action, Acknowledge, Reseat, of, and Refer to Public Works for Staff Evaluation and Recommendation for Future Board Discussion and Possible Action. A regular road maintenance petition to the Mojave County Board of Supervisors requesting that Teller Road from State Route 95 to Caye Vieja Vista, a length of .25 miles in the Fort Mojave area, to be accepted into Mojave County road system for regular maintenance, subject to meeting all applicable requirements. Mr. Lutowski? Does anybody have quick questions for Mr. Lutowski on this item?
I have no questions. This is in Mr. Gould's district, so...
Right.
I'll defer to Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Mr. Lutowski, can you give us a thumbnail overview?
Yes, Madam Chair, Supervisor Gould, this is merely an acceptance and referral, so the matter would come back to the Board of Supervisors for future consideration if the board does consent to acknowledging or referring. Housekeeping item concerning Teller Road on the development of the Walmart in Fort Mojave. Walmart undertook as part of their committed improvements the paving of Teller Road, this was previously maintained by the county, as an unpaved roadway, and Walmart, as part of their improvements, paved about a quarter-mile of Teller Road. So as a means of accepting it as a paved roadway, we are undergoing this nominal process of the regular road maintenance petition. So staff will, in fact, provide the paperwork documentation showing that the paving was completed under county permit and to the Public Works' satisfaction, however... However, this is just a process by which memorialize the paving of Teller Road.
Madam Chairman, so, Mr. Lutowski, this road is already paved?
Supervisor Gould, that is correct. Yes, Walmart defected that improvement.
Thank you.
It provides access to Walmart.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion.
Yes.
I move that Item 42 be adopted.
And I'll second the motion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Madam Supervisor Angus?
Yes.
The motion was that we adopted. Are we not just acknowledging receipt of...
Yeah, we're just acknowledging the receipt. I'm sorry. And referral. So that's what the motion would be, that we acknowledge receipt.
So moved.
Okay. You have a second for that?
Yes, correct a second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
You're opposed, Supervisor Johnson?
Yes. Okay, that's four to one. Mr. Hendricks brought this forward. Agenda Item 43, Discussion and Possible Action. Authorize the execution of agreement for water entitlement between MVIDD and Mojave County. Mr. Hendricks.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. If you recall, when we were looking for standing with the MVIDD water issues, our attorneys recommended that Mojave County look for a piece of property of a certain size that had MVIDD water allocation. We located a 15-acre piece of property, and the board approved. Purchasing of that property, this property had roughly 30 acre-foot of water allocated to it, so it did meet the criteria that we were looking for. Becoming more knowledgeable about the process in the district, to be a elector in the district, it required that we were able to grow sustainable crops, and the 30 acre per feet that was allocated to the piece of property wasn't sufficient to grow alfalfa, which was a sustainable crop. So the board chose to apply for additional acreage that was necessary to be able to grow the sustainable crop. At the time that we applied, there was no water available. Just recently, one of the large landowners that controlled a large amount of acre-feet of water from the MVIDD was evaluated for their water use, and it was determined, he determined that he would give up a certain amount of water. He was also on a waiting list to obtain additional water. He agreed to step aside and in favor of subsequent suppliers, which were Chip Sherrill Farms and Chip Sherrill in Mojave County, to allow that water to go to those applicants. And at the February meeting, the MVIDD board approved, tentatively approved an agreement, the agreement with Mojave County pending board approval to grant Mojave County's 66.6 acres of additional water, which would bring our total of water to 96.6 acres for the irrigable 13-point acres that we own, and allow us to grow sustainable crops and subsequently be an elector in MVIDD. So administration is recommending that staff approve the contract and the payment for this additional water. Thank you.
Any questions? Supervisor Gould, do you have anything to add? Because you brought it up earlier.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Now, Manager Hendricks did a good job explaining it.
Okay.
Thank you. Madam Chairman, I'd be glad to make a motion for the approval of Item Number 43.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Most, okay, so it's four to one. Up to Item 44, Supervisor Watson brings this to us. Discussion and possible action to rescind Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 174, designating a certain area of the Walpine Mountain Recreation Park as a campsite for the Boy Scouts of America and direct staff of the Public Works and Emergency Management Department to work with the Boy Scouts of America to complete the cleanup and transition of the property known as the Levi-Levi Scout Camp.
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman Angus, as you know, in the backup, we received a letter from Michael Marchesi, the Scout Executive Director for the Boy Scouts of America Las Vegas Area Council. Their resolution was directed to the council to initiate the process of ending their agreement with us for Camp Levi-Levi. We have a contact person of Brian Porter, who may or may not be a local person. Camp Levi-Levi has a, really a historical significance to Mojave County for 60, almost 70 years. It was the go-to place for getting different badges and awards for the Scouts. I hate to see this happen, but it is their request, and I would certainly like to honor it. With that, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the resolution to, accept their resolution to dissolve the lease.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 45, Discussion and possible action to approve a new lease agreement with the Mojave County Fair Association for a period of 10 years with one five-year option to renew for the purpose of conducting recreational, entertainment, artistic, cultural, educational, and/or convention activities, including annual county fairs at the Mojave County Fairgrounds in Kingman, and authorize the chairman to sign the new lease agreement. Chairman Watson?
Thank you, Chairman Angus. Bring this lease before the board, and I can pleasantly say that the new County Fair Association is one which is very much in working order. They've been making a number of improvements, especially with this last year. They've employed a new manager there at the fairgrounds, Mr. Woods, making some significant headway. As of even Friday, we have many partners involved in getting involved in Mojave County. We had the FFA instructor here with us Friday afternoon, showing an interest that he would like to partner with us on just a small portion of land there to exhibit grassland propagation. So it's a benefit to the entire community for the fair board to be represented there. And the new lease indicates that it can be relinquished in 90 days. So if we at some point in time feel it's necessary that Mojave County be responsible for the Mojave County Fairgrounds, we could certainly step in at any point within 90 days.
90 days.
And that is agreeable to the Executive Committee of the Fair Commission, the Fair Association. We have Mr. Woods in the audience today, if there are any questions.
Are there any questions?
Not at the fair board, no.
Okay. Supervisor Bishop?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Do you have something to say to somebody else?
Well, I guess it's just for discussion. This contract, I know because Mr. Esplin, did they live up to the, didn't they, what they're supposed to give the six months prior to expiration, and that wasn't done?
Yes, Supervisor Johnson, there is currently a lease in place. The lease has been in existence for a number of years, and it's scheduled to expire July 5th of this year. And they, in order to renew it, to renew the lease, they needed to give 180 days. They did not give us the 180 days, so it's set to expire on July 5th of 2019. What this lease will do is this will replace the currently existing one, so it would be a brand-new lease.
I guess with me, and I understand what Supervisor Watson's saying, we have a new board in, but the county has not really, at least in my opinion, benefited from the private running of this fairgrounds over the years. And now I see where buildings that we have are being put out to bid to rename, you know, structures to other people's names, which is probably a good business model, but I don't know if that conforms with what our lease is. I personally would rather see the county take it over. They've had this for years and years and years, not this board. I'm not saying anything about this board or their qualifications of handling it, but it just hasn't worked out for us in the past. That's all.
Madam Chairman, could I ask Supervisor Johnson a question?
Yes.
If Mojave County were to take the fairgrounds back, how, where are we going to find the dollars to put it in any further betterment? We're always constantly looking for dollars, and for the fairgrounds, if we were to take it back, I don't see a revenue stream for investment.
You make a good point, but I think the people that we have running it now aren't coming in with their own money, saying, "We're going to put X amount of dollars to remodel this or upgrade it." And the things you mentioned, FFA and things like that, and, you know, if we get more gun shows, get all those things, if you redo things, I think you'd get more support from communities in general to possibly spend general fund dollars to help it, you know, go ahead and with our, just like with our park system, if we had the park manager run it or have him, somebody under him, him run it, with the same, maybe the same program that the people that are doing it now have, I think money would be generated, hopefully it would. I mean, and they're generated in other counties. I don't see why we haven't survived so far, I guess.
Right.
We have an old cowboy like you to help out, so...
There's probably a couple of things that you're not aware of. We do have a number of folks that are in the commercial business that are interested in helping out Mojave County Fairgrounds. I believe it's on the 26th that we have an appointment with a local person that has a number of restaurants throughout Arizona that would like to be of assistance in helping to design a new kitchen. And I wish I could just go ahead and give you that name, but I'm hesitant to. But we have other people that are kind of lining up for different projects, so there is light at the end of the tunnel for the Mojave County Fairgrounds Association. It's not, it's not the association of old, where they were just asking us for $25,000 a year and not telling us where it went. Now, the manager comes to us or to Coral to authorize repayment of a particular project, whether it's the ADA funding for the restrooms or heating for one of the buildings. So our $25,000 a year is well-spent, well-directed. We no longer just write the check for $25,000 and forget. So I thought I'd impart that information to you.
No, and I understand that, and it's just, we've been promised the same thing every, all the time, and it hasn't come to fruition yet, and it's kind of hard to, you know, trust me again.
Well, I'm asking for your trust one more time.
Okay. Can I say something? Is this something that, for one thing, this agenda item is just to authorize the agreement? We're kind of going off on some other tangents here. Is this something we can continue and then bring it back for discussion at next meeting so we can really talk about the different options that might be on the table? Or are we at a time crunch?
Somewhat of a time crunch. If we were to authorize a lease today, I understand that we need a unanimous vote. If it's not a unanimous vote, then we have to go through the process of having an appraisal put on the property of its appraised value, of its, not only its value, but the value of its revenue streams. And at that point, then, it could be bid on by private organizations.
All right. Can I ask you something, then? It has to be unanimous. So if we vote on this today and it passes, can we still, because you said we have 90 days?
Yeah. The lease doesn't change. The method of approval changes. If you were to get, say, a 3-2 vote today, then I would probably like to bring it back with the other method of the appraisal and the revenue stream appraisal for authorization if you wanted to elect to give it to another nonprofit.
Madam Chairman?
Somewhat confusing.
Yeah.
Mr. Hendricks?
And, Madam Chairman? And thank you. What Supervisor Johnson, or Supervisor Watson is referring to is that, similar to the other leases that we contemplated lately, it's 11256 is the statute that that falls under. And, but when we determined that the existing lease, to be able to extend it, required 180 days, and that date wasn't met, staff and the county attorney's office and Supervisor Watson took it as an opportunity to actually readdress the existing lease. And we saw it as a good thing because the existing lease didn't have a clear way for Mojave County to escape the lease for a period of years. So what happened was the lease materially changed from what it was previously. And we wrote in to that lease a termination clause for Mojave County that we could terminate without cause at any time, given, I believe, 60 days notice, which means that if the board wanted to continue the lease and then have staff come back with a recommendation for different options, you certainly could do that. And then if we came back with an adequate option that you all wanted to pursue, then you could, we could set everything in motion, not miss a beat with bringing in events at the fairgrounds. And yet, at some future date, if you wanted to take over that fairgrounds, like Supervisor Johnson suggested, and utilize, try to build it up internally, we certainly would have that opportunity to do so.
At any time.
At any time.
So I, I misunderstood.
If you believed it to be...
You said 90 days. I thought you said 90 days after this, this contract was executed.
I'm sorry. I misspoke. It was 90 days, that we could terminate with 90-day notice for no cause if we believed it would, to be in the best interest of Mojave County.
And they can wait for 90 days for absolutely any reason you want.
Chairman Angus, hopefully I can clarify the issue here with the unanimity and stuff. 112519, those are the powers of the board, the Board of Supervisors. We are offering to lease property for less than fair market value. In order to do that, we can do that to a nonprofit so long as there is a unanimous board. If the board unanimously, all five say, yes, we're going to lease this for less than fair market value without a public auction, we can do that to a nonprofit. This is a nonprofit organization. We can do that 112519. If the board today is not unanimous, then this will not pass because under 112519, Section 9, we have to, it's got to be unanimous. If that's the case, then it will not pass. Then any of the supervisors can bring it back under 11256.01, which allows us to lease for less than fair market value if we do four weeks consecutive notice, and we publish in the newspaper and say, this is, we are doing this, we're entering into this lease agreement with this association, this is what we plan to do. And we could do that, but a private business could come in and say, hey, we will offer to take that away from you for fair market value. That's what the process by which 11256.01 would require. So there's two options. Today, we could go at under 112519, be unanimous, a unanimous vote, and then they would enter in the lease, the lease would start today, and you move forward. If it doesn't pass unanimous, then they're still on their current lease, it'll expire in July. It will, by virtue of the terms of the lease agreement, it'll expire in July.
So if we pass it unanimously today, we have more options?
If you, no, not necessarily. If you pass it today, we will enter into a new lease agreement. And that new lease agreement allows for a 90-day out clause like...
90-day out.
Exactly. County manager and Supervisor Watson have explained.
But we'd have to act within 90 days.
At any time. At any time during the terms of the lease. It's a 90-day out clause on a lease. It's a 10-year lease. At any time, we can say 90-day notice.
That's only to exit the lease.
Exactly.
Okay. I'm sorry. I misunderstood you.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Another option, I believe, if we want to give this board a chance, would be to amend this lease to give them a year to see if they could get their house in order in that period of time.
Certainly.
Because essentially, if we vote this out unanimous, it only takes, it would then take three members to exercise the 90-day clause.
That's correct.
Supervisor...
Supervisor Smith?
Yes, I just had a comment. I wanted to say that there's several new board members at the Fairgrounds Association that are very excited about some options that may be coming up, some partnerships with various people throughout Mojave County to make this fairground something that we've been wanting it to be for many, many years. So I would like to give the new board a good opportunity to bring some of these ideas forward and make the fairground something that Kingman can be proud of because it's a prime location and, you know, we've got the potential for a future event center, lots of entertainment opportunities, and some cosmetic improvements that's going to help the neighborhood. But I would not be opposed to a one-year renewable lease, if that's the pleasure of the board, to see what the new Fairgrounds Association board members can pull together.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, I'm sorry.
Supervisor Johnson, I yield to you.
Yeah, Madam Chair, we're going to give these people all these, all this help, but they didn't follow the lease they had before. We've known this lease was going to expire. Now, because they didn't come to us and ask for an extension of the lease, we're stuck with a short timeline. I would recommend to the board today to continue this till the next meeting. I would not go to a vote.
I'm sorry, say that again?
I would recommend to continue this till the next meeting. I would not go to a vote today.
Do you want to put that in the form of a motion?
Oh, no, that's, it's not my idea.
Oh, okay.
I'd be glad to table it till the next meeting.
Okay.
And possibly between now and then, we can explain to Supervisor Johnson what's currently going on. Maybe Mr. Woods could drive to Lake Havasu and visit with Supervisor Johnson. And we could get a little clearer idea of the investment that our local commercial people want to make. My concern is, I would certainly hate to see general fund money going into an investment in the fairgrounds when there's another opportunity with this new board. There are only three members of an 11-person board that are left over from the board that would not respond to us prior. So we do have a new board, and they're performing extremely well. Mr. Woods was presented with over $30,000 of unknown debt when he took over, and now he's got it whittled down to about $10,000 overall unwritten, unrecognized debt that either some secretary or somebody in the prior operation had conveniently overlooked, probably the best way to say that.
Also, a question I have, Madam Chair, is, has the county done, gone out and done an assessment of our property to see where it stands?
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Johnson, our risk management and facilities people just once again went through the property. Originally, when we did an assessment, you know, a couple of years ago, I believe it was, there was this long laundry list of issues that were not addressed, ADA issues, safety issues, emergency safety issues. And just recently, we found that a significant amount of those particular issues have been addressed by the current manager and have been repaired. We did redline a couple of issues that hadn't been completed. And right now, the latest assessment took a look at ADA compliance and made some recommendations. And they saw easy fixes for the restrooms and other things that they recommended to the fair manager. So yes, to say, we've tried to stay up on top of that and limit Mojave County's liability as much as possible.
Can the board get that copy of that? Because I didn't see it here.
I'll get that for you. It just, they just completed it.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
We have Mr. Woods, current manager of the Mojave County Fairgrounds, in the audience. If we have any questions of him, if he'd like to step to the podium. Mr. Woods?
Are there any questions for Mr. Wood?
No questions for Mr. Wood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so where are we at here?
I'll make a motion to table the item for two weeks.
Is it continued?
In that amount of time, we can get the assessment to each of the board members for further review.
Okay, is that the right term, table or continue?
Continue.
Right.
Continue.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Item number 46, brought by Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You've all seen the backup. Not much more for me to explain.
Right.
We've addressed this issue in the past. I think it'd be nice to have a letter go out and see if the legislature will address this issue to give us some kind of control over not only the quality, but the vendors that come in, especially with, right now, we have different prices in different cities. That was, I can't say anything else. It's not in the backup.
Okay. Well, we do have someone signed up to speak. Mr. Kyle Dunn?
Hi, how's everybody doing today? My name is Kyle Dunn, and I'm the operations manager at Machine Cuisine, who subcontracts out the local vending for all the state and county facilities. We've been in business out here in Mojave County going on 11 years. We take food handling very serious. You know, we have a deep, like a walk-in freezer, walk-in cooler. All of our totes go out in insulated, packed bags, and with ice blocks on top. You know, we're health inspected every year. We actually just had a health inspection done last week, which we pass with flying colors every time. The incidence that's in, that's made the newspaper now, is one moldy burrito that was purchased because of the snowstorm that we encountered. So we were unable to access the building in the weekly service that we usually allot to Mojave County admin. You know, we have our name and information posted on every machine, so if anybody has any suggestions, you know, items they'd like to see in the machines, we'd be more than happy to take care of that. We've partnered with Pepsi to bring in the Hello Goodness program, which is a better-for-you option that's, you know, helping drive, you know, healthier choices in our schools, in our counties, stuff like that. So I believe this was taken a little bit out of context. We are subcontracted in. And the way the program works is, it is operated by blind operators who are legally blind and, you know, are business operators. And the state has helped give them an opportunity to continue life and present themselves and still be active members of society. And Kurt Kurtson was the contractor that was allotted the contract about 10 years ago. And when he passed away, we were asked to step in and fill his position. Since we've taken over, we've had every piece of equipment inside the state and county facilities replaced with up-to-date equipment so that we can run our remote telemetry, which allows us to have on-demand access to all of our machines, to oversee all of our inventory levels, run reports, so that, you know, expiration dates aren't an issue. And it also allows us the ability to run debit cards, which wasn't really available when we first came to the area. Most operators just don't see the benefit in it. And, you know, we take pride in providing a top-level service to everybody in Mojave County. We came out here in, about 10 years ago, with 54 machines, and since then, we've grown to almost 600.
Okay.
So.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dunn, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Dunn?
Yeah, I do too.
Okay, let's go, Supervisor Gould will go first.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Sir, do you operate free-market vending machines also? Or just the government program?
We do free markets as well. We have one installed over here at the local jail. We have about nine throughout the county at the moment. Three at the prison, one at our jail here, one at Dot Foods. So at the moment, we have to abide by really strict guidelines by dating and everything, all of our fresh food. I presented Mr. Michaels, actually, with a free-market option about a month ago, once this incident came up, because a refrigerated machine, you only have about 14 days of viable shelf life on refrigerated items. Unfortunately, with the machine that's up there now, you're kind of limited to 50 selections in a steelbox. But we presented a micro-market, is what we like to call them, where it would allow for healthier options, salads, fruits, you know, healthier alternatives, instead of just a bag of chips and a soda. Unfortunately, we haven't heard back on that matter.
Madam Chairman, sir, my question is actually pertains to, do you operate vending machines in non-government locations?
Oh, absolutely.
When, so is your facility then inspected by, is it, are they inside Mojave County?
Yes, we're located off Castle Rock. We actually just had our inspections by Mrs. Perkins.
So the county health department inspects your facility, even though, under the government program, the state program, that you're exempted from inspection by the county health department?
Yeah, so we are inspected by the county. Any machine that contains fresh food, dairy products, or anything like that, has to be inspected. And we have to pay our permit fees every year. So a health inspector will go out, inspect the machines, make sure that the refrigeration is at the proper temperature, that our facility is handling food in the proper measures to contain food safety. So if that answers-
Madam Chairman, sir, is that on both the government-located, building-located equipment and the equipment that might be located in a private business?
Absolutely. It's on every piece of equipment that we have with food, fresh food, milks, any sort of food that's open to perishable.
Madam Chairman, I thought there was an exemption in that program that said that they were exempt from county inspection, health department inspection. I may have read the backup material incorrectly. Thank you, sir.
Yes, Madam Chair. You said Mr. Cookson died. How does your company qualify under the state law?
We are subcontracted because there's nobody that is, well, the contract for Mojave County is awarded to somebody out of La Paz County. And since there is no legally blind vending operator in the area, they subcontracted it out to us.
And I guess, that's the only question I have for you. Thank you. It's nothing about them, but it's like, what the gentleman's bringing up, they have, you know, healthy standards, and they pick things out. If this was something that was run by the county or we subcontracted, maybe our employees don't want healthy foods. They don't want a salad. Maybe they want candy bars and potato chips. I don't know.
But if they can cigarette that up, they do that health report.
Yes, right. When Mr. Gould goes to the health thing, he can bring that up. But yeah, I think that's the problem, because like you're saying, now, you know, they don't have the people that are qualified for it. I guess you could ask the county manager, do we have any say on these vending machines, where they go, when they go, how they go?
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Johnson, I defer to our procurement director, but we've had this conversation before, that we have no contract with these individuals. They can come in and look at a location and actually choose that location and install a vending machine in a government facility. That's my understanding. And even though I can't say for 100%, possibly the only reason that they were inspected is because he does outside business, outside of the state statute on vendors. So if you want a definitive answer, Becky, am I correct on that?
Hopefully, I am.
And Madam Chairman, if I may, I have one more question to ask Mr. Dunn after Supervisor Johnson is done.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, the blind program that's operated through DES, what it does, it exempts the vendors that have established with them from competing, from having to compete for government business. The Randolph Shepherd Act, Randolph Shepherd, the federal Randolph Shepherd Act, provides them the opportunity, and if the program so chooses, then we're bound to participate in the program and allow them to operate the vending operations. So we don't have the ability to solicit and compete that business as a government entity. That's the exemption, as I know it. As far as health, I'm not sure. I would think they would have to go through the same inspections that any other vendor does.
Mr. Hendricks?
And Madam Chairman, it's my understanding you received an email from the vending-
Ms. Dunn?
Ms. Dunn.
Yes.
That indicated, at least in the last paragraph, that they were going to, not that they wanted to, or not that they intended to, but they were going to remove all vending machines from county facilities. Is that correct?
We did receive-
We need clarification on that, but it indicated that that's what was going to happen.
Yeah, we did receive information this morning, or an email, that was sent to DES from Ms. Dunn, indicating that basically, if the county is unhappy, they would remove their machines from, the email states this facility. I think it may be intended to read more broadly. But that in no way means that DES would grant us an exemption to go outside their BEP program to contract for these services.
And I guess, Madam Chair, that supports my position of, we have no control, you know, and whether the state will do anything or not, I doubt it, but-
Well, this item is just to approve the letter.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Or version, I just wrote a letter on, can be changed.
Okay, thank you. So did we have a motion on that?
So I'll make a motion that we approve the chairman signing the letter and sending it out.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we've got a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, item 47, from Supervisor Gould. Discussion, possible action, direct staff to investigate and bring back to the board within 60 days the possibility of rotating the location of Mojave County Board of Supervisors meetings between Kingman, Bullhead City, and Lake Havasu City. Take it away.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I thought, members, I thought this would be interesting to actually take the board supervisor show on the road, so to speak. When we look at the areas of our county, you know, it's over a 100-mile round trip for constituents to come up from Lake Havasu City or from the Bullhead City area to come to attend a board supervisor's meeting, let alone the fact that they're held on a Monday morning, which is inconvenient for most people that work for a living. So I thought this was interesting, something we might want to investigate. And I believe that this was done in the past also, because I remember attending a BOS meeting in Lake Havasu at the library, I believe.
I think that was the last time we had it.
I don't know what year that happened, but I think it would be something that would be interesting to have staff take a look at. I'm not interested in purchasing expensive video streaming equipment for those locations. And what I had in mind, I'm sure we can strike a deal with Lake Havasu City Council and the Bullhead City Council to use their facilities there, their meeting halls there. But I hope you'll join me in supporting this, at least-
Supervisor Angus?
Yes.
Supervisor Gould, would that include Colorado City, too?
We can go to Colorado City, if you want to go to Colorado City.
You only have to go through three states to get there.
Yeah.
Anyone else have, because I have something to add. In 2013, when we took, when I took office with the new board at that time, we brought this up. And we directed to go to staff. And what we found out was, the cost of doing this was exceptionally high, because all the things that we don't think about, that you have to take into consideration, people's salaries, the moving, the equipment, all of that stuff. So, and plus the fact that when they had done it back then, that you spoke about, not many people showed up, which is what we find when we do things like that. So I'm not adverse to it.
Different than the overwhelming crowd that's here.
Yeah, exactly. Well, that's the point, honestly.
Two-thirds of these folks are on a county salary.
But our IT director, Nathan- But our IT director, Nathan, just came over and said that they're gonna have new equipment, where we could sort of remotely come in through Skype. So I was thinking that if a supervisor wants to take a day and do it in his or her district, and do it through Skype, you can, you know, pick a place, and it will be, you know, it's not cost prohibitive, like taking the whole show on the road, as you say.
Sure.
And, and again, I'm not adverse to getting it back, but again, we, we did it, we asked for that information years ago, and that was, I don't think it's gonna change all that much.
In that respect, it shouldn't be too expensive for them to come up with, update that information currently, and let us know what it would be currently.
Okay.
And you got new improvements in technology that might be taken into consideration also.
Okay, you want to make that into a motion?
Sure.
I have a question.
Yes.
I know you never looked this direction. So with, with the Skype idea, I could go to Meadview and hold a Board of Supervisors meeting in Meadview, the rest of you would be here in staff, but I could be in Meadview, and, and my constituents then could, could attend via Skype.
On cue, here he comes.
I mean, this is interesting, because I have Dolan Springs and Meadview and White Hills, and I'm sure that all-
I think, Madam Chair, if I may, that what Nathan is referring to, and he can explain for himself, is that, you know, individually, you can do it, and, but as far as me going and sitting in the library in Havasu, and having everybody watch it on my laptop, it's gonna be kind of hard. And, I mean, they could get, if they wanted to talk, I guess they could go on, but I don't know if that would be a great idea.
Well, it's something. I like the sound of it. I don't know if it'd work, but-
Morning, Board of Supervisors. The Skype idea, basically what it is, is the new system is gonna give us the ability to allow someone with a Skype app on their phone or their laptop, participate in a meeting remotely. So the Skype functionality is really for an individual board member to attend remotely somewhere. It's not really something where we wouldn't have a whole room connecting through that Skype interface. I mean, the advances in technology do allow us to do additional things, we would just have to research that and flesh it out, because we've never done that before. The key ingredient being, we need internet access at that location that's fast enough to provide quality audio and video. So depending on where you're at in Colorado City, you may not get that type of data service. But our facilities in Havasu and Bullhead would facilitate that, and if we were going to partner with Lake Havasu City or Bullhead City, I'm sure in their location, they may have a data connections fast enough to facilitate that. And we may even be able to do some stuff with their equipment that would enable us to livestream and produce the meeting similar to how we do today.
Anyone, any questions?
No, you know, my, my final comment, closing comment, I guess, is that if this is possible, this would be a way each individual supervisor could take the Board of Supervisors meeting on the road to their constituents. I'm not sure if the time delay on, on, on the audio would, would be more of a disruption than, than the convenience of carrying this forward on the road, but I know my area, it's just like Supervisor Gould, it's, it's fifty miles one way, so it's a hundred-mile round trip, and, and I don't know how far Colorado City is, but we have some vast areas to cover, and-
Five.
Live, live streaming has been working really well for us, and I, I wouldn't want to take all of the staff to, to Meadview, or Golden Valley, or Dolan Springs for a meeting, but I wouldn't mind traveling myself.
Okay. Okay. So you made a motion?
No, I got interrupted.
Oh, okay, well, this floor's all yours.
Okay. My motion would be, direct staff to investigate and bring back to the board within sixty days the possibility of rotating the location of the Mojave County Board of Supervisors meetings between Kingman, Bullhead City, Lake Havasu City, and Colorado City.
Okay. We have a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay.
I'm not going to Colorado City.
I wouldn't mind going.
Well, then you can Skype from here into Colorado City.
Well, I mean, I think we're, I think we're talking about two different things. Supervisor Gould wants our physical presence in these, for all of us are there, so people can see us and see staff, where I don't think we're set up to, the Skyping is basically for the one person. I mean, you can have, you'd have to have a big screen for everybody to see, or they're all sitting looking at their phones, which is, they can do now. I don't know that that's gonna-
I think Supervisor Gould, and correct me if I'm wrong, he just wants the staff to come up, and maybe there's been some changes over the last few years, to come up, and he wants to see the cost of it, and, you know, the feasibility of it.
Right, that's a feasibility. I'm not asking for a vote to do it today.
Right.
I'd like to see what it would take.
Okay, so we have a motion? And did we have a second?
Yep.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item forty-eight, this was brought to us by Supervisor Watson. Discussion on Possible Action: Adoption of the Board of Supervisors Resolution Number Twenty Nineteen Oh Two Eight Supporting the Colorado City Fire District's Grant Application Partnership Request for Proposition Two Oh Two Gaming Funds From the Hilo River Indian Community For Public Safety Purposes.
Thank you, Chairman Angus. We have Chief Barlow in the audience today. They'll be the recipient of this, these gaming funds. It's, it's a real great way for small departments and small fire departments to receive funding to buy the necessary equipment. So with that, I'll make a motion for the approval, item number forty-eight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there anything else? With that, this meeting is adjourned.